Anyone that on the commission that needs to do that, we're going to continue. And let's see, report of the chair, announcements from the chair, veteran service report, that is on your desk, and all you need to do is to recognize that. We do have, we do have, we do have on the agenda tonight, a zoning issue, a rezoning request, no one has signed up for this, so there's no one to speak for this. So you see that that is a request to rezonate in Tennessee, the property there, and the clerk will now read that to us.
There will be a Republican vote in Southern County Commission meeting, January 26, 2015, at approximately 7:00 PM. This meeting will be held in Southern County Administration Building, Mission Chambers, 355, no nobody driving out of Tennessee. MPA Holland, E. Tucks, and Jerry C. Gillum, E. Tucks, are requesting to rezone their properties located at 2559 Highway 25W, Cocktown, Tennessee, from agricultural to commercial to land unit development. Certain properties located on tax max seventy-nine, a portion of the parcel twenty-nine point zero two and parcel twenty-nine point zero four respectively contain one point five eight acres in our zone agriculture. Comment requests located in Southern County planning, office stormwater department located in Southern County Administration building. Anyone having interest, bizarre comment or ask questions concerning this request is invited to attend the meeting.
Was there anyone in the audience who came just to talk about that? There's no one that signed up? Okay, if not, then I need a motion. So we have a motion, Mr. Taylor, need a second?
Okay.
Second from Michelle. Any questions? All right, Holland, in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Becker.
I'd like to maybe hear from the, what district this is there, the commissioners, that that district, just to get their opinion.
It would be in Highway twenty-five W in Cocktown.
That could run all the way to Gillum.
It could be any district.
It's Commission District Four, Mr. Chairman.
District Four. Okay. Okay. You're okay. All right, you're good. All right. So there's a motion. There, say second. Holland, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote like sign, that is unanimous. General Assistant Judge, let me say that we looked at moving the General Assistant Judge up, because I know some of you were here for that, but we did not do that because we thought there may be people who might speak to that, and so we could not put that before public commentations. So the General Assistant Judge now is there, and what we will do at this point is that we will take nomination from the commissioners. Remember, the Bar Association has given us three names, Alan Embling, Mike Carter, and Tommy Boyer, three attorneys who will automatically be invited to come to the forum, the forum to be established by the county attorney. We get the list of names, and we get an evening that those people can all attend, and we will send out an email to you, or send out information to you, letting you know about that, and we would encourage you to come to that. We will give them an opportunity to speak about themselves, tell us why they want the job as General Assistant Judge, and then there will be questions that could be asked by the commissioners. So with those three names, I ask if there is anyone who would like to make a nomination, if you will get into the queue, and I say that Mr. Mr. Vol Taylor.
I don't want to make a nomination.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I spoke forward briefly to this. You know, I expect all three candidates that were nominated by the board. I, you know, I can't understand at night how we're moving forward with this when we don't know what it's going to cost. Nobody can tell me what it's going to cost, this year, next year, next year, or that. We haven't had, you know, you're doing something, it's not knowing what it's going to cost. So I believe we defer this.
Okay, there's a move to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Who was the second? Okay, Mr. Mr. Aiken. All right, so we have a motion, second discussion. Oh, it's not in favor, I've been told. Okay, then it's not in favor, so you want to put that on the board?
Yes, sir.
All right. The the motion to defer the matter is on the board. Each commissioner, please report your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered. Anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote. Receiving four affirmative votes, motion to defer fails to carry. Okay, next in the queue is Mr. Graves. Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Jim Hawkins.
All right. Jim Hawkins. Okay, Mr. Foster.
Mr. Chairman, George Hussein is a constituent in my district, and he's asked me to place his name in consideration.
Okay. Did you spell it?
D-U-C-A-N-E.
Okay. All right, Mr. Drummond.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Devin Sutter.
Mr. Ball.
I would nominate Assistant District Attorney Vaughn White.
All right. Mr. Brubaker.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Pomeroy.
Well, we have nominated people who went through the vetting process, and there were anybody.
Anybody.
Any type of license in Southern County.
Southern County.
Okay, thank you.
You have one? Okay. All right. Seeing no one else in the queue, we have the nominations, if you can, if you have those.
This is the slate, and we will get the meeting set up, and I want you to know by the soonest we get everybody.
Okay, thank you. Also too, on January the thirtieth, at Fort Lees Middle School, at eleven-thirty, you've been invited to a lunch with the Board of Education. Mr. Wise has put that together, you may have donuts, I'm not sure. January the thirtieth, at eleven-thirty, at Fort Lees Middle School. All right. Approval consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve consent agenda? We have a motion, Mr. Ray, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Foster. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of you folks like sign? Okay. We have a group of reports about the county officials, those are on your desk, so those are available for you, that is just for informational purposes. Notaries are on your desk somewhere. Everyone has that somewhere. All right. So, all right, is there a motion that we approve, that we approve the notaries, mistaken, second by Mr. Comended? Any discussion? All right. That is on the board. Notary applications on the board, each commissioner, please report your vote. Twenty-three votes are entered, anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote. Receiving twenty-three, twenty-three affirmative votes, notary applications are approved. All right. Reports of standing committee, Mr. Mr. Goode, committee.
Ladies and gentlemen, we have nine current state committee, and we have three current serving members, Jerry Curry, Mike Honeycutt, Jim Williams, seventeen members, group, my candidate, recommendations, I salute.
All right, for a second. Second, Mr. Lamar, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote like sign? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll see on there, on your regular agenda, you have the also of the name of Commissioner Ben Harris, that was removed as he's currently serving, and a tax increase added to there. A reassignment was made by candidate Steve Graves, Vivian Rice, Reese, Lynn Bradwell, yeah, that can add, Miss, I salute.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Comended, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, next.
That was it, Mr. Chairman, we'll meet next month.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Lamar, Education Committee.
Yes, I appreciate you. January the fifth, especially the committee, Matt, Dr. Phillips presented that the architectural and engineering task for the renovations in Phase One, we passed it on to the legislature and it's on the budget agenda for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Highway Commission, Mr. Graves.
Mr. Chairman, I have one resolution. It's fifteen oh one oh two. It's the adoption of the road list that we do every year updating, if there's any changes to it, and I so vote.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second? Second from Mr. Bacon. Any discussion? Everybody know where all these roads are? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any of you folks like sign? Okay.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. General Ops, Mr. Reen.
Notary officer.
Thank you. Public Service Committee, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Chairman, of course.
Thank you. Emergency Services Committee, Mr. Guthrie.
Uh-huh, Mr. Chairman. They are not committed to be on January the eighth, and want to study the potential merger of the city of Portland and Southern County to construct a firewall and ambulance station. That was a very beneficial meeting, and it should have been forwarded to all the commissioners and apologized, and I'll get that done, but this will be taken back to respective bodies, hopefully further referred. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brubaker. The Slating Committee, Mr. Harris.
It's working, man.
Good. I don't think so. There it goes. Is it working? Yes, yes.
One item, Mr. Chairman, Resolución fifteen oh one dash zero three, support the current troop level at Fort Campbell, urge Congress to oppose any reductions, I salute.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir. Rules and Procedures Committee, there's no report from that. Financial Management Committee, Mr. Langford, we had an item that was looked under the financial management.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we, we added to the agenda to shift item fifteen oh one dash sixteen from budget to financial management, and there is an issue with our E-911 building with the architects contractor. There's a further issue with the grant money, because it's run out, and we have to repay the full two million dollars. There is litigation, which the law director can speak to if necessary, but more or less what this does, the state has allowed us to redo the architect fees and take that out of the grant. If you, if you look on the document in front of you, the CBVG is the one point six nine million is the, is the grant, is allowing us to, to cover the architecture fees, to, to redesign the E-911 building, to start the process rather than lose the two million dollar grant in the state.
All right. So there's a motion, Mr. Shannon.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote like sign? Okay. We got an extension from Mr. Vol Taylor. All right, Budget Committee, Mr. Gutten.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just looking. Thank you. Let's hear that as well. Mr. Chairman, fifteen oh one dash oh four, and fifteen oh one dash thirteen, everyone has one of their lists, as the art and professional fees, they're all wanting to sign that their list is specifically diversified upon.
No, I, I think the question is, please, three.
Okay. All right, we have a motion to approve and approve from Mr. Lamar, second from Mr. Mr. Foster, which items are those?
Fifteen oh one oh four through fifteen oh one, one oh.
One oh.
Items one through seven on your side.
I'm a nice west, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have a motion and a second, now we are open for discussion. Mr. Vol Taylor.
This will relate to this, you had spoken earlier that when we got to this, it was much part of the agenda, but you have to speak to things related to the tax increases, and this is related to the tax increases. When you were sworn in, you asked us to do our due diligence, in studying the ways, in studying the facts, in studying what's going on. After the special call meeting on November third, I knew how upset everybody was going to be. I knew what kind of pushback we were going to get, so I did my due diligence. I called the county attorney, and I asked that it be placed on the normal November budget agenda. She said the finance director does that. You need to contact the finance director's office. I contacted the finance director's office, and I was told that the chairman would have to place that on the budget agenda for November. Well, in the meantime, the chairman called me, and said he wouldn't get any calls opposed to him if I had a problem with it, to give him his phone number.
The chairman, which chairman?
Of the budget committee.
Of the budget committee, okay.
So I did that.
Okay.
And I've been very upset about the tax increases. If you were here that night, you know it was, you know it was the night, because the people I represent are very upset. They're not against schools, they're not against increased services, or provided services that currently happen. They want us to live within our means. You can, you can put money into something so long, and what I learned in economics class was you reach the law of diminishing return. No matter how much money you invest, you get to a certain point where you return the minimums. Basically, they're telling us to live within our means. Yeah, I've been fighting against the tax increases, I've been fighting for the people's right to speak. I did that in due diligence, like you asked me to do. I got another problem. I was told that I, due diligence doesn't tell me that I, that I'm going to be part of a video, trying to twist my words and make it look like I'm saying something I'm about saving. Because the way we're spending money, you can twist these words. The way we're spending money, your taxes is going to get raised again. The way we're spending money, you can't keep spending money, and you can't keep raising taxes on the people. They get tired of it, I think they spoke loud tonight, but they're tired of it. I try to listen to the people I represent, people down there, I know I'm in a lot of harm, you can sit over and make those different comments all you want, give me dirty votes, it's fine.
Mr. Chairman, it's not necessary.
Well, it might not be necessary, some of the other places, but none of them aren't necessary either.
Go ahead, Mr. Shannon.
Go ahead. Again, Mr. Chairman, I agree with my point of order. Mr. Taylor is very concerned with other commissioners using his name, but then he wants to call out.
I didn't call out, I didn't call anybody, I'm glad you.
Okay.
If you want to get your corner of water right, get your corner of water right, I didn't mention anybody.
I think I have. Mr. Lang, go ahead. Mr. Taylor, good job.
I did.
Okay, are you trying to make a motion, or are you, I mean?
Yeah.
Okay.
I believe we defer the rest of the items to the budget.
Okay, so you made a motion to defer the items, is there a second? Okay, here, no second. Yeah, we're back to the queue, and the motion is that we approve items one through seven. Mr. Ball.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sure, I'm right here, one, two, I really, that's something I really want to talk about over here, and I don't know what is wrong with fellow commissioners here, but.
At ten minutes to play, I'm thinking you will.
It could happen, you know, no, no. Mr. Chairman, first off, I appreciate it, I sincerely appreciate the patience that everybody has today, in that turnout. As you can see from that turnout tonight, people are upset, and life was up. This wasn't something that they, they expected, and I've heard, I've heard people talk about what we should have expected, what we shouldn't have expected. Someone pointed me about some stuff I didn't do, do, you know, that's okay, I'm a big water man, but you can see by tonight, how people feel about tax increases. I wasn't warned it, I don't think, so, you know, I'm a little bit older, but that's okay too. But, but one of the things I, I do have a lot of concern about, I hope we're not going to, because I had producing videos and letting them play during our commission, I think that is totally out of work, I feel like it was something that we should not have done. Delay is, is a part of this commission, delay is, is a, is a huge part of this, and we stand up and get our corner across, and try to convince our fellow commissioners, this is the side of the motion standing. When we do it that way right here, we take all the blame away. Also, we had people standing here for hours, hours, to address this commission, but we had some of the, to address this commission via video, which doesn't give them near as much pressure. It took a lot of courage for these folks to come up here and make their point in front of this body, especially in front of hundreds of people. So I just hope in part that that's not something we continue to do in the future.
Okay, speaking to the motion now?
You can.
Because I gave everybody, I told them we're speaking about video.
I'm still not finished yet.
Okay, go ahead.
The, you know, as far, as far as the, our budget goes, I'm going to tell you something, folks, in government for thirty-something years, we're lucky, we really spend money, and there's a lot of government for us, and you know that's a fact. If we allocate the money, we will spend, but there is a bottom to that barrel someplace. I was hoping, hoping that in the future, our folks up here might look a little bit closer, I think we should have given them the notices a lot, and I think we should have told people, hey, we're going to be in a tax increase on this day. I'm hoping, you know, I proposed this in the past quietly, but I'm hoping that people will listen to what I heard tonight. And what I heard tonight, is I heard senior citizens, I heard people up here, they came up here and buried the wall, that were suffering. Now, there's no one who's taken this position seriously in the past, but I wish people would at least consider, and I'm throwing it out there, I'm not asking for a motion, I'm not asking for anything, consider the fact that if we really want to appreciate revenue for our county, without putting none of these burden on the rest of the county, this is going to sound weird, all we have to do, folks, is freeze the tax on the elderly. What happens then, and I'm in the real estate, I see the people moving to Florida, I see the people coming through Tennessee, I saw the people who go out there and they stop in Tennessee, and they love the fact when they get here, that the property taxes are so low. If you freeze those taxes on the elderly, make sure what's going to happen? They're going to bring disposable income to our area. Rather than looking down to Florida, what they're going to do is they're going to stop here in Tennessee, they're going to see the environment, they're going to see what they love, and what, what's going to happen is, we're going to bring their disposable income, we're going to bring their tax dollars here, and guess what they're not going to bring? Not going to bring students educated. So our point is, folks, is if you really want to look for alternatives in raising tax, raising revenue, there are alternatives out there other than raising taxes. I wish that we could support a referendum at some point, sit down at state level, that we would actually be able to minimize tax increases. No worries, having so much that goes over a certain point, we put it to referendum, that way we're actually doing what the citizens want when it comes to property taxes. And, Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't make a motion.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Well, we don't.
Well, I mean, are you, you haven't spoken to the motion yet.
What, what was the motion?
The motion is to approve and approve one through seven, and approve the.
I would like to, what I would like to do is, I'd like to get a little bit more information on those, those items that we're going to be doing. I'll, I'll, that, and here's, we're going to have architect fees, and for things that, you know, we don't have any items, so we'll, we'll, we'll just, we'll just walk them.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's an answer to a question.
You can go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
This is strictly seventy percent of our fees that is in Phase One, school project, that has been due about, including ad hoc committees, about four sets of meetings, and the budget's been attended to us for about three months, and that, this is another question, please, that, this one motion.
Okay, does that answer your question, Mr. Ball?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hand.
Yes, on, our, our potential fees, what I remember, usually runs about five percent, and that includes the engineering. It looks to me like that these numbers are higher than that. Now, I'm sure that's easy to explain, because it's remodeled, and you don't know what you're going to get into. I'm just saying that, that everybody needs to take a look at this. I don't know whether, I don't know whether we bid these, I don't know whether we have a firm, we just take them, hand them to them, they give a surprise, and if somebody would would answer that, I appreciate that, I don't know. We, we don't have to, we don't have to quote professional fees, I don't think, I think that's right, we don't, we do not have to. It, but it might be good sometime to try and just see how it turned out, see what we can save on any money. Now, I know we've got one architaphract that we use a lot, that's probably a good thing, because you get one set of plans, and you can, you can step over here and build another school building, same set of plans, you don't have to go back and pay the full amount again. But, but it just, it appears to me that we're talking about, what, one point four million, that close to what the total is, one point four million. We could, we could have an awful, awful nice young architect sitting there up here in the ceiling that's been a one point four million. I suspect we could pay an architect and a draftsman and buy him his paper, or cheaper than that, and, and we're just, we're just beginning, we're just beginning to spend money. I mean, we've got the money, the needs there, we obviously spend the money, and, and everything that pops up, we, we call an architect, we call an architect to see whether what the judge of the chair is going to look like, we're going to, everything comes up, we call an architect to see, walls are a little barren, so, less, less determined to look at some of these professional fees, and see if we can move the money out of the expense category over, back into the budget that they come out of, and use them for something that's possible. Because I, I'd like somebody to explore those fees before we just accept them, and maybe that already happened.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I may have to do that, you know, obviously, Mr. Lawrence can speak to this as well, but to me, this is just a percentage of the professional fees that we have to do, it can be using jail and other things, it's a standard, everywhere we have not using architects and other new ones, it is a bit, in the left, so to speak. Fifteen, we're going to, and these are fees that are up to some expenses, we're going to end up with a motion here in the event nineteen, that relates to paying back these fees. And, Mr. Ball, Mr. Ball, I think you have.
Resolution one five oh one one nine is actually set to cover the cash flow for these architectural fees and the land purchase, we have option on if they want. I'm going to let you quick, any county architecture.
School. Mr. Hope, Mr. Eric, you just were going off, second.
Mr. Chairman, not to, not to go too long, I just, as my student said eloquently before, I know there was some public comments made earlier about, that's not making to renovate our old schools, but I, I can attest that the number of long-term problems we have at White House High School, it's closing in on forty years old, it's, it's definitely needed. I can remember one of my early memories, when I was about seven or eight years old, I was sitting, I got in, got in a fight with another boy walking over from Hunter Middle School to Beach High School, and we were taking Mr. Hyde's office, and Mr. Hyde was forced to reconcile, two fourth grade boys fighting. I'm not a young man anymore, so that gives you an extent to the, and I'm sure Mr. Hyde can attest to that too, that the, the office suite at Beach High School is somewhat tight, and, and needs some, needs some renovation work as well. The main reason I need to stand up is there was, as Principal White House High School, I have a very conflict of interest in tonight, I'll be voting my conscience.
Okay, Mr. Ball, Ross.
Well, it's, it's been a long night, I know that after midnight, when I'm talking, nothing good happens, and, but, the people that are still here, I think are people that want to know the truth, and if I have to listen to people go down riding trails, and I'll take my turn, to get the facts that I seen out there about this, and why we should group this together, and what's kind of taking place. For the record, this commission is set in front of you, only voting on one budget, and that was the school budget. All of the other budgets that were passed, were passed last summer by the city, some of them are returning, some of them are no longer here, they opted not to address the tax rate issue, I can imagine why, I could be here tonight. But, the only budget I had a chance, and this body got a chance voted on, was the school budget, which I would like to note that that budget passed nineteen to three. And I can see why the folks in this county, you're upset, because you don't have any idea what to believe. How could you? How could something pass nineteen to three in October? By the way, I voted no to that budget, I believe there was a clip of that on there. How could you know what to believe? When I looked across the audience, at the commissioner from District Three, who called the doctor of schools up here, and made us skeptical, put on great doggone show, then voted for it. Then two days later, went on social media and said, the citizens of this county have been held hostage by the director of schools, and the commissioners voted for this. I said, why? I see a lot of reasonable people who wanna know the facts. You answer me how you go up to fourteen million dollars of increased spending.
Mr. Chairman, what's it got to do with this most?
It's about schools, that was the school budget, that's what, that's what...
Go ahead, give your point.
I, I, I'm gonna get to my point.
Who are you calling him?
I'll speak, uh, thank you.
Mr. Pister?
So, anyways, how could you know? I've seen other commissioners who say it's getting so wealthy.
What's it got to do with this most? I don't have anything to do with architectural fees.
I'm getting there, sir, everybody else will have to...
When you talk to me, I'm talking personally, thank you.
I would...
Thank you. If you give me the same thing about District Three, you pointed at me. Can you believe me?
I just said, Commissioner, I don't break the rules.
Yes, sir.
Anyways, so, something's been invented, uh, sorry. Uh, I've heard people say we're so wealthy, there's no reason that people, certain parts don't have water, and then the very next meeting say, I'm getting there, okay, I've sat here for six hours in this town. And then if I'm not talking about...
What's it got to do with this most? I've been sitting here thirty minutes, I punched my button, go on him, I watched.
No, you didn't hear.
No, you didn't.
Facts are...
I didn't think you were sitting up there.
Facts, okay, go ahead. Anyways, so let's just go. The folks on the aisle have been grouping together to protect for fees on a school proposal that needs to be done. There are some problems that need to be addressed, we have to start it, it's been going on for three years. Another commissioner, we had an issue at a school this week, called me and said, we have a huge problem. Actually, I called him to discuss the problem, he goes, Kevin, we got a huge problem there. We need to turn lanes, we need to get people off huge lane, it's a, it's a, it's a safety hazard. I ordered that that was in this phase, the things he voted no against. Uh, but thank you to you and one of your commissioners, another data about yes or no against whether you agree with him or not. Uh, so, should we group these things together? Yes, we should, we've been kicking this can and putting on this theater for these people for three months. Uh, facts are facts, you're the excited lady, said you're gonna spend them anyway you want to. Uh, but this is, at some point, we are the reason why people are here yelling in the hallways, because people just wanna play games instead of actually do what's best for the county. And I voted no for that school budget, I voted for the increase, and I voted on some other things, I tried to take everything issue by issue, but we need to group these together and move forward with this project, it's been talked about in Ozzy.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Tatum?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I ran as a county commissioner, based on the improvement of schools in Southern County. Uh, condition our schools, and we all know, by land, portals and field elementarys is, it's cool as all over, it's just unbelievably too much. This is an opportunity for us to take a chance and improve, not take a chance, improve our schools, improve the marketability of our county, to attract new people, to, and quality people, and they quality businesses. Um, there's studies out to show that quality of the schools, of the director of effect, the quality of the people there, and the primary, better schools will be primary. And I'm all for improving schools and moving on with this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I have an injury conflict of interest, I'll be voting my conscience.
Okay, Mr. Grace.
Mr. Chairman, kinda lost my train of thought, thanks to one of my fellow commissioners. But I hadn't lost it all. We've talked about the elderly people in this county, thousands of them, might lose their house, they might not. They may figure there's some ways to get some more. This is part, these architectural fees is part of the tax increase. Hey, Alexander Funeral Home, you think this is right? Their taxes went from eleven, with their prices, went from one thousand seven hundred dollars to twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. Facts. My property taxes went up forty percent, I'm gonna pay them. I, I looked at my appraisal earlier, they were seventeen, eighteen percent. Well, I'm gonna live with it. And then, we have a commission that passed a tax increase of twenty-four percent. It puts a burden on my thing, my mom and daddy's eighty-two years old, both of them just turned. They're part of that group. And I agree with Commissioner Wong about putting a tax freeze for all of the senior citizens. We don't have people losing their houses, I don't have many, I don't have that crystal ball. But I've had hundreds of calls, anyway, I've had some for the tax increase, no doubt. I've had, I've had hundreds against. I've had people talking, calling me on the phone, some commissioners don't answer their phones. What I've been told. My phone is open almost twenty-four hours a day. But I, I am ashamed at this commission of not being open, not hiding behind closed doors, but not being open with the public. That's what I'm ashamed of, I'm ashamed of myself. Maybe I didn't talk to enough people, I sat here and didn't say anything. But it's wrong to treat the citizens of this county like... These architectural fees, I'm supporting schools for eight years, I get tired of hearing them. Some of these commissions, some of the citizens, they'll say, the past commission didn't do anything, had been done. And this could use a bit of fire, how many millions of dollars did we put out on the table? I know this is bringing up history, but history is part of it every day. We need to be open and transparent. The, the industrial part could be a good thing, I don't know, but my constituents don't want it.
We're gonna talk about that, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't get off on that. But, but the architectural fees, I support the schools. But comments like my fellow commissioner, not missing no name, y'all heard him, he pointed at me, looked at me. I didn't have nothing to do with putting these, only these architectural fees on here, I don't know if they brought my name up. I ain't talked about him.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Goddard?
Yes, first, I'd just like to say that I have an injury conflict of interest, and I'm gonna be voting my conscience on this. Um, we've had a couple people ask some questions about the budget, and I would like to ask this one here, if I can be brief on it. Um, by statute, this might be something delayed, by statute, when was the tax rate supposed to be set?
October one.
No, later than October first, but it was supposed to be...
It was supposed, you could, you cannot set it until you're on the line, and then you were supposed to set it as soon thereafter practical state statutes, say October one, but because we didn't have one set, then we moved into the number.
I've got that, so, if the previous commission had set the tax rate, we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight, like it's all I've said.
Not necessarily.
We could change it.
We, we could change it. Okay, Chris Tatum, Mr. Chris Tatum.
Yes, sir, I just admitted these in earlier, um, Mr. Taylor, I believe the number I've seen for the court in this minor state is the judge, and any FTEs that are associated with the court portions like that was five hundred thousand dollars. So that's the only number I've seen, I don't have a detailed breakdown of the budget for you, sir, but I'm trying to find it. And then, um, for the other part, in regards to Mr. Wong's mention, I just wanna say, just as a point of clarity, I think it's a great idea, we're gonna bring that up on budget to research and discuss it at the committee meetings with Mr. Wong, and kinda get some better numbers from everybody, so, please look to that one.
Mr. Good. Thank you. Mr. Good.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple quick things. Um, I wanna clarify that the actual meeting, the chairman called real quick, at least I can provide it, Mr. Chairman. Um, the, the actual meeting that was called, um, regardless if the situation in the county's office was correct or not, that's a side issue. Two points I wanna make, a lot of people have pointed out the fact that taxes, their taxes may have increased more than twenty percent. Uh, if it is more than twenty percent, if it only happened one way or one way only, it is coincidental that we're also being afraid of it. Is that not true, Mr. Wong?
One wonder, what's the point of work? Through the way that they paid, and they did, sustain and increase agreement, that's why they start buying these way to start.
Do you want me to speak up? If it increased more than the twenty percent, it's because, one, the reprisal brought your value up more than average, or there was a renovation, or an error on your earlier assessment or the current assessment.
So, uh, and, so the, be perfectly clear, um, at the direction of the county's office, we were delaying setting the tax rate that was set. Um, mortgage companies, title companies, and people wanting to pay their tax cars, uh, by the end of the year, will come into our trustee, uh, in droves, asking us to set the tax rate. Does that affect you, can you shake your head, cheaper now, because yes.
Mr. Good, you know, and I understand what you're trying to do, but...
But, but, Mr. Chairman...
But we're at a point now where we've got a motion on the floor, where we need to, we need to zero back in on that motion.
Well, there's been no comments about the, the actual meeting, and the public, I want to clarify that, I know it's late, and I don't wanna make, you know, one of those...
Can you finish up real quick?
I can't, but so, at the direction of, with our trustee that had come to us in a meeting with our county executive, and you, um, that said, we absolutely have to set a date to have this meeting on this week, or we can't get tax products up by the end of this year. It had to be that day. Uh, you know, and a subsequent couple days later, Dr. Phillips, not coincidentally, ended up, trustee, he confirmed that. So that's exactly how we got to that day.
Just to clarify. Thanks, sir. Now, do you wanna say anything to the motion? Uh, Mr. Becker, comment question?
Thank you.
You got one more in the, in the queue.
Okay.
You got Mr. Becker and one more.
So, thought I'd give you a little opportunity to, to speak about the, the tax rate, since we're doing that. Um, the, the one thing I just wanted to make a comment about is, you know, I've gotten several emails on, on both sides of the fence, if you will, uh, phone calls, I've had some nice, um, communication discussion with people. Uh, not with an intent to change their mind necessarily, but at least explain the reasoning why I voted the way I did. And for the most part, everyone, um, got to the point where they, they understood, they still disagree, which is fine. But, um, they at least understood the intent at least. The, the, the one thing that, that I couldn't, um, get across, and couldn't ease any frustration, really all pointed back to the mass confusion about the, um, process about property assessments. Um, have a constituent who, uh, their property value went up, um, twenty-four percent, uh, and their, their neighbor, you know, next door to them type of thing, um, may have only went up five percent, or maybe even actually decreased, and, and I, I got, where I, I shared their frustration. I got to one where I could not answer any of those questions. So I would just like to make a comment that, um, I think we as a county need to, uh, look at how we can better educate, myself included, um, the residents of, of our county on how that property assessment actually works. I had a constituent here spoke tonight, she said her, her property value doubled, uh, and I believe her neighbors, um, may have doubled as well. Uh, I, it just, obviously, there's confusion questions, so I think we need to do, we need to put some focus on that, thank you.
Mr. Hannity? Do you have a question? Yes, sir, thank you. Uh, nobody else is left in the queue, we have a call for a question. Uh, so you must put that on board, we are... With that objection, we're voting on, we're voting on items one through seven.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't seated, I don't know what it is. I didn't get down. I just got a quick question from the back office, please.
Okay, push it, but real quick, since you, it is on this motion.
Yes, it is.
Okay, good, thank you.
I apologize. Miss, let's, the county attorney, I think, is there a process now to, uh, look at different professional services like the architect and engineer? Don't you go through a process, Dan?
Technically, no, um, architectural fees are one of those things that you're not supposed to be in. It's one of those professional services like CPAs, like bloggers, where you choose that on the person's professional reputation and history and lots of information.
I thought there was a process that the state required county governments to do now.
That's with some grants, like the, the Harden facilities that we've talked, that we're talking about tonight. That grant has some processes you have to go through where you interview architects, but that's not the general law.
So then, we don't have a process of, or do anything other than choose.
Mr. Hannity, you called the question.
Yes, sir. She said that there was, that we could not, is that what I understood her saying, that we cannot quote architectural fees?
Beto.
Can't be an architect.
Can't include it after the lowest Beto.
You can't, by state law. That's crazy, question.
Yes, sir, here we go. All right, the motion, the motion that's on the floor is to approve items one through seven under the budget agenda. We are voting on all of those resolutions with this vote. Okay, anybody have any question? We're, we're voting to approve items one through seven, the matter is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. Twenty-two votes are entered, anyone not voting, wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote. Receiving twenty affirmative votes, items one through seven are approved on first and final reading. Mr. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, fifteen oh one, fifteen oh one dash eleven, removed, seventeen, plus fifteen oh one dash sixteen, taking that out because it was removed, and we set the budget on the commission, like, uh, are all carryover, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, eleven through seventeen minus sixteen.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, Mr. Mark, uh, set that, Mr. Foster, uh, so, we can review the approval. Let me say those numbers again.
Mr. Chairman, that's fifteen oh one, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and seventeen, of course, sixteen.
Is our... Yeah, sixteen, so it's eight through, items eight, uh, approved. Fourteen, thirteen, because thirteen's already been approved. Okay, so, all right, so we have a motion, uh, we have to set it. Any discussion? See no one in the queue, uh, we will vote. Motion on the floor is, the motion, the motion on the floor is to approve budget items eight through fourteen, and that is skipping thirteen, which has already been approved. Resolu-, uh, the vote is on the board, each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered, anyone not voting wishing to vote, anyone wishing to change your vote. Receiving twenty-one affirmative votes, the resolutions are approved on first and final reading. Mr. Good.
Mr. Chairman, uh, without objection, we do fifteen oh one dash nineteen, since it's a resolution on paying money back in the county executive on nineteen, without objection.
Without objection, we can do that. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, fifteen oh one dash nineteen is the reimbursement agreement that we passed, unanimous, and that is strictly where we just, uh, once we take the money out to pay for our bond fees, uh, fees in advance, that we're actually gonna pay that money back once we get the bonds passed over.
Okay, we have motions, our steps. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, uh, any questions? And, uh, Mr. Mo Taylor.
So we're borrowing money, and we haven't secured yet.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Good.
Mr. Chairman, though, uh, what the tax rate change and injuries allow us to, we, uh, one of our problems that some of us view is we were at complete bond capacity, kind of our opinion. Uh, the tax rate allowed us, in the scenario of, we can collect the bond, through our financial director, uh, and negotiate to get higher bond, uh, to increase that on the, uh, one thing we've kind of not done in the past is where we have taken money from, uh, things like our hospital fees, what we wanna turn around, pay that money back. Uh, so, uh, it will be coming from bonds for the, what we have just voted on, uh, but that's what it might come from. Any questions, Mr. Chairman?
What's that?
But it doesn't clarify that we've stated earlier tonight that we're in such a dire need, that we have no word left to borrow money.
Mr. Chairman, I remind the commissioner, uh, uh, from the statement that, that is an active statement from our board from previous mission for the tax increase, the tax... from our board from previous mission before the taxes, the taxes boost, I haven't changed it.
We've generated more money. All right. There's a motion, second, but that's on the board. The resolution is on the board. Each commissioner, please record your vote. All twenty-four votes are entered. Does anyone wish to change your vote? Receiving twenty-two affirmative votes, the resolution is approved. Okay. Mr. Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to fifteen oh one dash eighteen, the appropriation of up to $250,000 to do new buildings and preliminary sales, that has been mentioned. Mr. Chairman, it's okay, we'll turn over this country to the county executive that wants to speak to this. Not only may I have a couple of people, expert lives that want to speak to it as well.
Yes, Mr. Hope.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know we've had a long evening. What's that? Door open? Hold it away from him. Closer.
Do you touch the next? That's better. What about you, Mr. Lawrence?
Okay, let's try that.
Yes.
Hey, his works a whole lot better. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, thank you, Mr. Goode, for introducing me. I put on your desk a packet. In that packet, I've got several items. I guess rather than labor the subject, I'm going to go straight to the point. You know, we've done over several years the same thing in Sumner County. By doing the same thing, we get the same result, and that is this. We try to run as conservative as we can. This is a very desirable place to live. People move in. We have great schools. We keep investing in schools. More people move in, more people move in. Ultimately, we don't have the type tax base we need to sustain that, and so we have to raise taxes. And it starts to process over again. We have great schools, more people move in, this is a desirable area of Middle Tennessee, and we don't have the proper economic base to support that, so we have to raise taxes again. Tonight, I'm presenting you with a proposal that's an investment in our county, just like investing in our schools is an investment in our county. And what I believe this will do will drive private investment. Large advanced manufacturers are looking for sites that are shovel-ready. That requires a public investment. You have to have all of your utilities in place, your infrastructure in place, the site needs to be properly vetted, and state certified. Now, I can tell you, out of all the sites, the large sites in Tennessee, and I believe at one time there was seven, there's only one now available. That's in Weston City. I'm not trying to toot our horn, but the reality is, Middle Tennessee is the engine that drives the economy for the entire state of Tennessee. It's the most desirable area, and we're highly sought after. To give you a prime example of what I'm talking about, the metropolitan region, which includes Sumner, Wilson, Rutherford, Williamson, Davidson, and we just added Rockfish County, which is small. We, today, we have around one and a half million people. Projections are in 25 years, and these are conservative projections, we're going to have over three and a half million people. Why? Because people want to move here. The quality of life's great. Taxes are low. I believe if we change the dynamics and we invest in this region, this will be a windfall for Sumner County. We've never done that. We've never had the vision to do that. I've heard from a lot of people why it won't work. But let me tell you, this is not a gamble. This is an investment. And like all investments, there's a certain amount of inherent risk. But that's why I've had the professionals come in, study this area, and they've given me the green light. This area would be able to accommodate a 2 million square foot footprint. To put that in perspective of what we're talking about, Volkswagen in Hamilton County in Chattanooga sits on a 1.9 million footprint. As you can see from the packet, what the economic impact has been for that area. We need jobs and we need high-paying jobs to build our tax base that has ramifications all over the county. It increases our retail tax base. It makes us very desirable in all communities for spin-off industries to come in to basically support that large industry. I know many of us in all the communities want high-paying jobs for our citizens. So tonight, I've assembled a team, and I'd like for them to speak on specifics, and I'd ask them to come up, if that's acceptable, Mr. Chairman, and speak at the mic. I've got Mr. Jimmy Johnson with Ford Sumner. I've got Reggie Mudd with State ECD. I've also got Jim Harrison with Civil Site Engineering, and Charlie Lyon, which is the Director of Forlaken. And if you gentlemen come up, stand together, and make your presentation.
Mr. Chairman, please. Is that? Yeah. Lieutenant, County Executive, Chairman, Detective, Commissioner, as you, County Executive, you said, I'm to the Johnson, Ford Sumner Economic Partnership, and we'll let the others introduce themselves, as Chairman Paul just did. Tonight, I'm here to tell you that Sumner County, the national market is a place and destination. I-65 is about to become the all-know corridor south, but tonight, I would like to concentrate on State Route 109, the transportation corridor, which is being completed in lieu of I-840 door. The corridor will run from the new I-65 exchange in the Kentucky State Line through Sumner County and connect with I-40 and I-840 in Wilson County. State Route 109 is completed, the state will have invested some $250 million in this road project. This is a, State Route 109 is obviously a growth in jobs corridor and a designated corridor for Franklin Goodsmo. Growth is going to happen in this quarter. One of your, one of your handouts is a chart projecting population and employment growth over the next 25 years in these two counties and these three cities that have been projected in effect. I know, Jim, tonight is an exciting and forward-thinking opportunity to begin the deliberative process, deliberative process of developing a jobs center, enterprise center in the heart of the state 109 corridor. It's very much an opportunity to lay claim to intentional development and play the jobs represent within Sumner County. What we'd like to see is a one-of-a-kind supersized enterprise park, industrial park in Sumner County. We want a Sumner County site that's complementary to existing private public sites that we have, and excellent private public sites that we already have. This will begin a very deliberative process that will be involved to develop and establish a select Tennessee certified site. The target market, as mentioned, will be advanced manufacturing, looking for individual projects, either from transportation equipment, electronic manufacturing devices, pharmaceutical manufacturing. Hi, Mr. Reggie Mudd, with the Department of Energy, can you give us a few more?
Yeah. I think the comment's very favorable for this. Tennessee just finished up a record year recruiting 24,000 jobs in the state. More than 8,000 of those jobs were recruited in this county region, so obviously we're getting our share. We looked at 55 different projects in this city county region last year that have a potential of 9,600 employees, a billion 400,000 in combined investment, and more than 7 million square feet. The market's very favorable, it's very ripe for this area. The one thing that we are short of, that we need, of all these sites, are good, large sites that have good rail access, that have the right utilities, water, gas, sewer. So these are all things that we think will be built into this. The other thing, the Beretta plan has put Sumner County on the map. My coworker was at a retired Tennessee conference, she represented Tennessee Retirement Conference in Philadelphia somewhere a couple weeks ago. A gentleman came up and said, "I want to know about Galton, Tennessee." She said, "Well, Galton, well, Sumner County's not in the retirement program, which we'll talk about later." And he said, "Well, it's good enough for Beretta, it's good enough for me." So we have that today and to now, and it's a good kind of catalyst on that. The only county that's really done a great job of this in recent years is Montgomery County, Clarksville, and they've gotten more than their share of projects, and most recently landed the 1,680 dollar Hancock plant. So we think that the future is bright. It's not without its risks, but we think it's a great opportunity out there. Like anything else you do, you have to do a plan. I think that's being put in place. The due diligence has to be done, and Jim's going to speak to that here right after me. But I've been in several meetings recently in other counties where people are saying, "What can we be, what can we do to get us more ready for redevelopment?" And again, these are the things that you have to do to be ready for that. As County Executive Paul said, the only other site in Sumner Tennessee that would be comparable to this is in Memphis. Again, I think this is a very ripe area because of our, our big fortune. Thank you.
I'm Jim Harrison with Civil Site Design Group. I'm a civil engineer. I want to talk a little bit about, should have been on your desk, should have seen one of these, our civil site logo over the corner of it. It is really an outline of how we would proceed to look at each property from a new diligence standpoint. There's, if you look at that chart, there's actually a column for a 100-acre site, a column for a 500-acre site, and a column of 7,000, which really won't pay 100,000 to 1,000. This outline is based to, basically to identify those key components, and we would go through really a two-step process. The first step being early due diligence. This early due diligence will be a process which would be prior to building a park of 1% of the dollars for any property, to carefully look at preliminary geotechnical, to look at environmental concerns, to look at any archaeological concerns, to go through a Phase One environmental, to go through those geometric concerns and constraints that you have. We all know you have to have good access to a site, and you need to have, for the multi-modal sites that we have in this specific area with railroad and with highway, with Highway 1 and 9, we need to make sure we've got good access to those, those key routes so that we can build to the sites we're looking at. That's the first step of the early due diligence process. The due diligence process is what shows at the bottom of the sheet. It outlines a full due diligence, which would involve more sole horns, geotechnical research, preliminary grading analysis, jurisdictional determinations for any kind of weapons that we might run into, flood planes, looking at any of those, anything that would constrain or constrict the full use of the property. We want to make sure that every dollar spent on a piece of property is fully usable for the purpose to its intended. Let me say this, we've worked on a number of these sites. They're very rather unique because you're looking at large areas. You need to look at masterings, you need to look at different, different things that industries are going to look at. But the biggest thing about this type of site, and the biggest thing about enterprise site like this, is that you're looking for one or two key projects. You've got to be ready. It takes time to work through these due diligence items. It takes time to work through these, these things. And if you do them on the front end, and if you're ready, when the industry comes, the industry will choose to look at your community. If you're not ready, they won't, because you're not ready. So we've worked with a number of, throughout Middle Tennessee and the state of Tennessee, we've worked with key employers, we've worked with new industries, we've worked with creators of highly technical jobs, what we all want to see. We've helped those companies to meet their schedule, and those schedules are so key in making this happen. So what this new diligence outline is for is to kind of give you just a picture, and we'll be up here to answer questions if we need to, but it's really just to kind of give you a picture of how we stepped through that process to make sure we're careful about every dollar we spend and it's moving in that direction to open that door and place out the welcome mat, basically, put out the welcome mat for those new industries and those new citizens.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Charlie Lyon, and I'm the Executive Director. Many of you know the Forlaken Regional Investor Development Authority. We also go by Tennessee Central Economic Alliance. We're promoting five counties in the northeast region of the Nashville metropolitan area. It is truly an honor to speak to you, Mike, and what I'd like to address to you, some of the marketing aspects. Some of you know that I've worked in various economic positions around the state, and some of you may not realize that I've been very fortunate to have hundreds of hours of training in economic positions and various universities around the country. But the, one of the blessed pleasures I've had is for the state of Tennessee, is to travel this country from the west coast to the northeast to encourage consultants and companies to look at our fine state. And what you would like to have is a company come in here and tell you that they would like to be here, and they make that commitment. The companies are examining you on the website and through consulting firms where you realize that they're even looking at you, and they are looking at what you've invested in yourselves, and they're looking at what you have taken steps to do to be prepared for them. So I'd like you to realize that there are companies that are being marketed from the state of Tennessee, Tennessee Valley Garden, Middle Tennessee Industrial Bank Association, and the National Chamber actually sells this area as well as Tennessee Central and even some other associations. When we're selling this, again, the first thing they're going to be asking is about the product. And the thing they're going to be asking about is the workforce. And you've created with your education system a fine workforce, and what I would encourage you to do is look at taking this another step, because a lot of these people are having to commute, is urbanizing, outside of the county for work. So this is not as much about land as it is about jobs and income of the government. And this is phenomenal opportunity that you would find if you hire a consultant out of Boston, New York, Philadelphia, San Jose, San Francisco, you name it, most of them I'll talk to, we pay them hundreds of thousands of dollars just to tell you that you need to have a product. This is wonderful opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Hope, do you have anything to add? But we, now we need to get a motion and set.
Yes, sir. And I want to make it brief.
Please.
I know we're all tired, and I'm tired. But I think we have an excellent opportunity tonight to do something that hasn't been done, to do something that's going to make a significant difference in our citizens' lives, to make an investment in our county, because it's just not the county that these people are looking at, it's the entire region. And there's no capacity, there's no capacity for this, there's no supply in this region. So if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to try to answer. I know our professionals would be also, and I'm open.
Mr. Hope, let me ask you this, so everybody will know. Why is it, why is it important that we do this, this evening at this late hour?
Well, if we're going to actually invest, we've got to do proper due diligence, Mr. Chairman. Let me tell you, you spend a little money and make sure, before any of this money's put down, or we issue bonds, that this property is suitable. And then before we purchase it, go on and make sure we do complete due diligence. And then, before we purchase it, go on and make sure that we do complete due diligence to make sure that we don't spend twenty million dollars, or five million dollars, or any amount of money on a piece of property that's not suitable for what our ultimate goal is, and that's to move us forward economically and use that to create jobs here in Sumter County.
Okay, and before we go any further, now that we've heard this in motion, we're going to have that motion accepted for us to reflect that forward. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, since this is sitting, I've got, I'll make a motion, one, about thirty seconds.
Okay, you'll get a second, let's get a second first. Is there a second? Yes. No, we have a second, Mr. Tatum, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to, I just wanted to say thanks to the experts that are here tonight at this late hour, and to bring as possible two things. The executive, and another one, the city mayor tonight, Mr. Foster, had a meeting, and this is relevant, I think, with former Commissioner, Commissioner Hager, with Mr. Mutt, whatever you know, and our district act. I say that to say, and he is from Sumter County, his mom still lives here, Doug is being, and to me that has a little wrong with, when he looked at this opportunity, his conference, Congress, Mr. Mutt, and Mr. Trump, was in Sumter County to pull this off, it would put us a lot of years to spend for decades to come. And I would stress, Mr. Chairman, that has been pointed out, this is strictly at this juncture of due diligence, we're on buying property or going to anyone just to try and actually do it. So, I would refer to the other.
Okay, Mr. Hinton?
Yes, this, you can talk this far as you go, but it makes it sound like that we've died and gone to heaven, it may be that, it may not. What bothers me is who's going to ensure, if this, if this passes, we find out this is, this is a good site, and we proceed, what's going to be put in place to ensure that we get the right folks out there? Now, if you ain't careful, you'll get people to get all nervous and excited, and we've been sitting here six years on this site, we don't have anybody out there, we've got somebody who's open transmission, chop wheeling out there. You, this is not for the faint of heart, we're going to try and do this. We need to know, we need to tell people that are coming out there that they got to pay minimum wage plus, that they got to have permanent employees and not use temporarily, that this is, we just, we just kind of thumped the lid off of this thing tonight, and there's way more work to be done. And I know we've got to find out whether, whether it's the property out there, but we're going to, we're going to chump down to our two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars or whatever, to make up our mind whether we can proceed or not. But if we don't intend, if we don't intend to do it like it ought to be done, then they know you're going to have to send a railroad truck. I would, I was hoping that some documentation, or some pattern, or some typical from somebody else's site could have been passed around for, for us to maybe at least look at, and I don't know how you do that, I don't know how you guarantee a county is that much less going to be gone, be for sure, but finding out what we're at.
Mr. Chairman?
Can I touch on a comment?
Uh, the Chairman of the Finance Committee, Mike Hinton.
I understand the commissioner's point, and I'm a former State Speaker, I'm an expert in Kentucky. There are mega-sites after development in Tennessee, there were none from TBA, non-mega-sites. They have certain restrictions on about how many, that you can never be in the situation, as was mentioned, where you buy it up, as was mentioned, TBA, I mean, I'm sorry, Volkswagen and others. And those would be restrictions, and the County Executive Director, Ron, that we would give, when our states deem this is a viable project to go forward, so we come back to this condition first, then we would put those restrictions in place where we would never buy it up and put like all these different parks up there, version one to two, max tenants, is that very clear, Mr. Executive?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, it is, and in your packet, including an example of Hampton County, Volkswagen, and it has economic impact, what was projected and what it actually was, and you are so exactly right. We have private developers in this county who have exactly what Mr. Hinton mentioned. They have sites, some of them are large, some of them are small, but they're parceling those out, building spec buildings, having, you know, small manufacturing, distribution, other things like that. That is not the focus of what we're trying to do here, and that's not going to bring the advanced manufacturing and high-paid jobs like what we're trying to focus on. Because, let's be honest, we've had our professionals tell us, there's no supply out there, and what we're going to target is one or two at the most, large manufacturing, advanced manufacturing, high-tech manufacturing firms with high-paying jobs.
Can we obligate the next generation of county commissioners? I wonder about that. I mean, we can, we can, that's it, no, that's it, just we can't, we can't bid out nothing, but we obligate the next generation.
Well, I think, to answer that, I think that we can put limitations and qualifications on the site. Now, let's be honest, nothing lasts forever. You know, I would hope, and I believe, and I trust the professionals, that we're not going to be sitting on this site ten years or twenty years. But if it happened to happen that way, and set on it twenty years, who knows what future commission could change? I'm not going to say that anything in this world is cast in stone and stays there forever. Even the pyramids fall apart after three thousand years, I don't know. But I will tell you this, I think this is a great investment, I think now's the time for us to do it, and I implore you to look at this and at least spend, what, fifty-something thousand dollars to make sure, fifty-four, don't have my glasses on, thousand dollars, so I can come back if this site checks out before we put any earnest money down and we do our due diligence.
Mr. Hough?
Mr. Chairman, I cannot support this idea, I voted for some architecture school, and I mean, I think we're headed in that direction of spending this money, but this is something that we don't have to do. This is something that the commission, this is something we can't take responsibility for, we didn't deal with this. I would rather take this twenty million dollars, at least this portion of the tax increase, and invest it, yes, but invest it back into the pockets next year of the taxpayers. I cannot support this. Thank you.
Mr. Hough, I can tell you, I spoke to earlier, that, you know, we learned to get advice, because I would regret it, but the over twenty-three percent increase was not what a lot of people saw, it was a lot longer. If you own land that is in the green belt, the state made it the green belt last year, I won't quote an exact figure, it's like, I think, thirty-three percent. I don't own any of the green belt, so I can't quote an exact figure, and I won't quote an exact figure. So, when you own thousands of acres, and that's your livelihood, and that's what's in my area, I think what we own thousands of acres, I think what we own two acres to a thousand of acres. But one farm that the fifty-one percent increase, property tax increase, is over nine thousand Another person, sixteen thousand and something dollars, property tax increase, so that's, that's a pretty good chunk. I mean, that's money that won't go back into the community, that they choose to invest themselves in the community, they kind of put it up to us, when we take it out of the pockets on how we choose to invest it. And they have, they have raised grave concern to me about this, and it, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars is what I'm rating, I'm rating it in fifteen-oh-one-eighteen. And I know, you know, a place with twenty million, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that's not a lot, but, you know, I can probably add up the rest of the farms in my area, that's always it, they're probably paying this two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but I don't want to speculate on a land of either. I'm all for bringing jobs to Sumter County, I'm all for responsible growth, but I can't, I can't fight with taxpayer money like it is and tell them that we just had to have as big of a tax increase. Thank you.
Mr. Hough?
Trying to get energy up there, Mr. Chairman. You know, we're being a nonprofit lately, and that's what we're being asked to spend. We've been given little or no information on this whole thing. You know, so if you were going to a bank, and you want to borrow that kind of money, what you would do is they would want to ask you a detailed plan of what you want to do. They want to ask you what the estimated cost of the property, we have no idea, we don't know what kind of costs, they're going to ask you what kind of income, or where's the income going to come from, we have no idea, what's the expected rate of return on your investment, the investments that we're supposed to be making for the citizens of Sumter County, we have no idea. Over the past week, I asked for some information, just so I can try to do my due diligence, and I've been, I've been told that I couldn't get there. You know, I've been told that I can't get contracts, can't get options for those, signing the land. These contracts, we should be in place for now, some sort of option, some sort of way to secure the land should be in place, but County Attorney hasn't reviewed any of this stuff, planning hasn't reviewed any of this stuff, I've been asked for, I asked for addresses of the property, so I have to look and see what properties we're talking about, what kind of taxes they're already paying in, what the worth of, what the value of that property is, and I wasn't given it. So, I've been told the property we're looking at is farmland, well, I did go out and look at all the farmland in Southern Sumter County over the past two years, the average cost of the farmland, over a hundred acres in Southern Sumter County over the past two years was seventeen-hundred-and-seventy-four dollars per acre. The highest cost of any farmland in Southern Sumter County over the past two years was forty-seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. We're being asked to spend twenty thousand dollars an acre for a piece of farmland. Now, let me tell you something, folks, we get down the pack, and I've been told that you can't do this stuff, but let me tell you something, thirteen dollars, you sell this courthouse here, so we can change anything, any time, with thirteen dollars, it's all the same. So, what we can do, later on down the pipe, we get into this situation, and we get in that deep in it, and all of a sudden, we can't do anything with it, we're not getting anybody issued in it, we don't have the development money, then what are we going to do with the property, we're going to lose seventy-five percent of our investment right there, we're going to go back to that five thousand dollars acre that's worth this farmland. So, that's, that's the kind of risk, it's certainly one of the risks, it's a huge risk to us. This project, in my opinion, it could be a government mine, but also it could be a money field, we could be throwing money down this thing in the daygays. The law's ready for the county, right off of that, we need the taxes and just this property to bring in development costs, we have no idea, I purged as much as twenty million dollars to develop this property. That service on this twenty million dollars alone, if this goes forward, this two-hundred-and-fifty thousand go forward, go to twenty million dollars, we're looking at twenty-two million dollars per year that we're going to be spending, twenty-eight million dollars just to pay for the property, not the development for the property. And I'm going to tell you what I did, I did call, and I did ask somebody, look in, look around on these things, and most of these things stand there, they're latent for years and years and years, so we're going to be sitting there looking at this property for years, that's what I did. If we don't get the interest in the property, what I also think is that when these people come in here, they're going to see you sitting on this property, this property that you're selling for a while, they're going to tell you, "Well, we'd love to take the property," and that's what's going to happen, you're going to give it away to them. They'll come in here and say, "Well, we want, we want to develop the property, we want you to give us the property," and then the next thing that will come out of their mouth, they're going to ask you for tax breaks, and every one of my favorite senior students here asks for tax breaks. So, how do we recognize a return for our, for the citizens' money? This is our money, this, we're not making an investment, the citizens of Sumter County wants to make this investment, and they're doing it involuntarily. In other words, they don't have a choice on whether to pay their property taxes or not. We forced them to pay their property taxes, they don't have a choice on how we invest their money once it gets up here. So, how does somebody start? There's no guarantee that this will bring employment to Sumter County, no guarantee whatsoever. Also, and it does bring employment to this county, in other words, if it brings people here, there's no guarantee they're going to live here, they could live in Lincoln County, they could live in Rockville County, they could live in Kentucky. So, how are we going to get our money? How are we, where are we going to get our money from? Now, we're thinking, so, fish out there about, we can see incomes, seventy thousand dollars, people who come in there and work at seventy thousand dollars. If you don't have a job, and I don't think it'd be seventy thousand, I think it'd be like thirty-five thousand, because if you're looking at the state of Tennessee, most of the people who work in manufacturing don't make seventy thousand, somewhere around thirty-five, forty thousand dollars, if they make that. But if they do make seventy thousand dollars, those people will be able to qualify for a house about three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. If you take that, and I don't know the figures, you figure it out yourself, twenty-five percent of assessed value divided by a hundred times the tax rate, that's going to bring you to about twenty-two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. Currently, it takes about eight-one-hundred dollars, eight-one-eight-one for a local state farm education website, ten children, one child. We've put in thirty-four-point-six percent of that, so if you take that, that's twenty-eight-hundred thirty dollars and sixty-two cents. So, if somebody comes in here with one child, in one of those places, he backs the law about four-five thousand dollars to have one child out there. We don't have the infrastructure, even look at this, we're going to have to depend on other places, other entities, other cities in order to give, have the infrastructure. We don't have fire departments in Sumter County, so we're going to have to go to someplace just to get fire protection. I've heard people say, "This is a true business deal," that people can, you know, people have been running off themselves to get this, well, I know a lot of rich people in Sumter County, and people say she's a good deal, why aren't they doing it? Why aren't they out there buying this land and doing it, the same thing that we can do? I've heard that say, "Well, it's too complicated." I don't think so. Who else can you please, I'm going to ask you this. We have alternatives, there are things that we can do. We can create the infrastructure, help these kind of things, we can build roads, we can put in water, and we're going to the county, there's things that we can do. You know, I'm sorry, I'm off. We can publicize and recruit these people, come into Sumter County, and one thing, we're not locked down, folks, we're locked down on one piece of property right now, because we're going to be promoting. But if we lock down and we publicize this, we get them in here. Portland is ready to go, Portland is ready to go in Hartley. Hendersonville, if we did do that interchange right there, I think it'd be a huge thing for Hendersonville, Sumter County. Galton, right in the north side. Galton, what we're going to do is we're going to have to provide the infrastructure. So, folks, we don't need to lock ourselves in to this one piece of property. We can go and do the same thing with private, private development. We can work with the state, we can work with other, other private development. So, if we want to proceed, if we're going to do this, well, what I think, brother, we're getting a car before the horse. We need to secure the property, put options on, put contracts on, this is the contingency in the contract that says, "Okay, we want this property, this, we identified the property, and bring it to us, we know what kind of property we're buying, we know where the property at, who it belongs to, everything, there's no fight." We're watching, we're looking at the property, we've walked over, we know what it is, we know what we're investing, we can get the taxpayer's money, and put public notices out there and let the people know, "Hey, we're about to put a mega site in your backyard." Because what are we going to do, if we're forcing down these people to draw when it comes time to build this thing? We're going to invest a quarter million dollars into it, we're going to pick out the property, and then we're going to get into our public carries, and we can have that, have this place filled again, and people come up here saying, "We don't want that in our backyard." And we need to complete a comprehensive business plan, in other words, we need to come up here, we need to know what the projected cost from it, what, where we're going to get the money from. So, what we're being asked is to spend a quarter million dollars of taxpayer's money now, folks, and I respectfully request that we don't do that. Thank you very much.
Christian, come in. You head it down, there you go. Push the button, please.
got to be...
No, it is tomorrow.
It is, it's me, I'm out. Tomorrow's my birthday. Uh, and I, I pretty much promised myself that I wouldn't say anything about this, but I do have one comment, and I, and I would hope that this would be the greatest thing that we've ever done. But, um, in, in my search, uh, about things about this, there's a website, Middle Tennessee Industrial Development, I think a so catch, and MTIDA, um, and, uh, they give the bonded debt and, uh, tax rate, very much Middle Tennessee County, and Lunary County has been, uh, talked about here tonight, and just, just as a comment, they do have the highest bonded debt and the highest tax rate of any county in Middle Tennessee.
We have two more, Mr. Hines?
Uh, I'll keep it brief, um, this is exactly what I didn't want to have, this is a very important issue, um, I do agree with a lot of the senators that have already been said, uh, you want to talk about having people yelling and screaming in the lobby, I feel as if we did our due diligence, uh, with the tax inquiries, I feel as if there was a lot of meetings that's all been rehashed, there was ad hoc meetings, there was things in the form of education, there were meetings here, uh, there, suspended rehashing, there has not been on this issue. I've been told that I'm a man that lives on political island, uh, because I seem not taking teams, I don't take teams. We were accused of trying to push this tax rate through the middle of night, and it's not true, but we were truly trying to push this through the middle of night. Uh, even if I was going to vote for it, uh, I respect the people who came, uh, I would think they can understand, and since they do have some pocket of gambling situation, that, uh, I don't like anybody who can be clearly one or five in the morning, uh, on such a huge, huge investment, those are the words of everybody, no matter what side of the law, I would not vote for it, be for it, uh, tonight, but I would, or any night, more likely. Uh, however, I would at least like to make a motion tonight, asking my fellow commissioners to defer this until we have proper wedding another month, uh, and more information that has not been provided, this has popped up in the last fourteen days, uh, and that's just too big a gamble.
Okay, Mr. Hines, there's that, we have a second, Mr. Hines? Uh, not invited, so, here we go. All right, the, the motion is to defer, the resolution requires two-thirds vote on the motion to defer, are you ready to vote, Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. All right, the motion to defer is on the board, each commissioner, please report your vote. Twenty-one vote created, anyone not voting, please vote, anyone wishing to change your vote. Proceeding seventeen affirmative votes, the matter is deferred. Okay, uh, Mr. Foster, Mr. Backer, you both are in the queue, so that is, uh, okay, we're, we're out there. Send the last, I'll have my, my, here. Okay, have motion secured. All right, thank you guys, and so, uh...